Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Council of Southfield on Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. Madam President, please call along.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Here. Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Cianci, which is signed by-
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Lea.
Here.
Ms. Seymour. Please stand and join us in the closing.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to your recovery for which it stands, on a mission under God, individual or collective, just for our-
All right, first item on the agenda is the regular appointment. We have a minute.
Madam Chair.
Please come.
Madam Chair, I, uh, there are no changes. I approve the committee of the whole meeting of November fourteenth, the regular meeting of November twenty-first, the regular meeting of November twenty-eighth, the committee of the whole meeting of December fifth, the adjourned meeting of November twenty-eight, December twelfth, the regular meeting of December twelfth, and the committee of the whole meeting on December nineteenth.
Board.
We have a motion by, uh, come from the House. This is a party come from Frazier, all in favor, submitted by the Senate.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Next we come to the consent agenda. Come from the item number two.
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't, uh, can you do the agenda? Item number C, the other number C is one that I have one question.
You want to call my name when you need to. So, this one?
And then just clarification on the second item, item E. Uh, is this early night, is that where we, uh, as the council, you talk to?
Oh, well, we're just about only around here.
No, I think if you want to just leave that on and just forward to the agenda, um, the detail.
Okay.
The clarification on-
We, we can go down with that one.
Okay.
That was our question on D.
Do you have a question, Michael?
Yeah.
I'm going to call on C, both calling D, and Michael Colby. All right, so the agenda, I am, A and B, the motion. I am, I can, uh, to remind the, uh- All right, um, consent agenda, item A is an award of additional water and sewer infrastructure maintenance to the Lincoln Falls services of USA and Loudmills, Michigan, and will not exceed annual allowance of one point seven million. Funds are afforded to purposes of the backup of the eleven thousand total water and sewer budget, and will be requested in subsequent year budgets as council may approve. The service provided includes water main and sewer cleaning along structural repairs and relineing. The city's water and sewer system encompasses the same amount of water and sewer mains. These services extend the useful life of the city's water and sewer system at a much lower cost, and with minimal disruption to the homeowner's systems and the public, when in pairs conventional, more invasive, total reconstruction. The recommended contract award is for a three-year period with an option for renewal for two additional one-year periods. The contractor has previously completed water main and sewer reconstruction for the city of Southfield, and has performed similar projects in other jurisdictions such as Bloomfield Township and the cities of Brooklyn, Lake Forest, and Chelsea. Aggregate unit prices have been held flat from the previous contract. Item C is award bid for low care and maintenance materials along with tree removal and hauling services to Ellsworth Industries of Plumwood, Michigan, and will not exceed annual amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five materials, and one hundred and fifty-five eight hundred and seventy for renewal and services. The term of the contract is one year, beginning March first, two thousand and twelve, and will be option to extend for an additional one year. Funds are provided in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve streets and highways, and parks and recreation budgets, and will be requested in future budgets as council may approve. First time costs for these purposes are flat compared to past history. Item C is award bid for tree trimming and removal services to three companies to provide natural flexibility for addressing various needs of the city, and to provide sufficient capacity in case of emergency or storm conditions. These contracts are for a one-year period with two-year renewal options, and will provide non-sufficient annual cost of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Funds are provided in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve forestry district, and in the dangerous tree removal loan program, and will be requested in future budgets as council may approve. The recommended contractors are the Michigan Property Network located in Highland, Michigan, Owen Street Service located in Auburn Hills, Michigan, and Shop Brothers Tree Care located in Warren, Michigan. Item C is award bid to HP Brands of Belleville, Michigan, provide paper, hand tools, and tissue products for the thirty-three buildings that are very costly with facilities maintenance departments. This award is for a one-year period and will not exceed amount of thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Funds are provided in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve facilities maintenance budget, and will be requested in the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget as council may approve. Item E is the award of contract for fuel hauling and delivery services to three bidders, petroleum traders of Fort Wayne, Indiana for unleaded regulars, and RPA petroleum of Brownwood, Michigan for ULS number two diesel fuel delivered by truck tanks for, for large requirements. An Atlas Oil of Onondah, Michigan for both unleaded regulars and ULS number two diesel delivered by tank wagons or smaller deliveries to various city locations not within municipal complex or the BBW facilities. The recommended contract period is two years, with an option to extend for an additional two years. Funds are provided for this purpose in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve public works and recreation budgets, and will be requested in future budgets as council may approve. Now, uh, I want to go, yeah, um, um-
May I ask a question?
We have the wrong, yes, my, my, my.
On, uh, city, in reference to the gasoline and diesel fuel, do we have, do we have an oversight on these companies when they deliver gasoline to us? Do we have a system where we, we have an oversight? Uh, through the chair, I'd like to bring that public works up to, because there's also some tree, uh, questions on the tree removal. Uh, yes, we do. We do have, uh, invoice and, as well as onsite, so, um, I might have asked you, do we, do we check the amount of gas they put in and not rely on the meters?
As far as different, different tanks?
We do?
Yes, we do.
Who does that? Your, your bill department?
Our, yes, their facilities at BBW, D R, it's, uh, our motor pool. Um, they're also checked here by motor pool personnel. Uh, the small tanks, they are, which the trailer, um, mountain tank we're talking about, their fire station-
Head to the-
Is that better? Is that better?
Yeah.
Right. At the, uh, facilities at BBW, D R, yes, those, those are checked by our motor pool. At City Hall, those are checked by our motor pool. Uh, at the fire stations, it's basically when they're running low, that's when they fill them, and those are usually five hundred to a thousand gallon tanks.
Yes, oh, thank you.
Uh, can I ask something to that, uh, item C and E, additional information? In contracts of delivery of four point one million gallons, gallons of fuel, gasoline, diesel, serving seven hundred units of municipal oil, that serve approximately two points for the eight million people. These, this is the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network in these other cities that are struggling. Birmingham, East Point, Arlington Hills, Willoughby, Nattie, Knobeye, Oakland, Rochester Hills, Willow, St. Black Shore, Southfield, Stone High, Troy, Warren, Waterford, West Windville, and Westland. That's additional information. Now, I've got one more, um, question on, uh-
Do we want to make a motion to approve, uh, first, to the A and B first?
Well, the one-
Okay, um, do you want to do, do we take the A and B first?
Yes, yes.
I make a motion, you know, to, to take the A and B, or-
For my name is Jordan, uh, ordered by Mr. Sider on paper.
Aye, aye.
Um, motion is carried.
And we have two quick questions. One is to the consent agenda E, um, and I just was wondering if you could do something technical, where the bids were open, I would say that Joe and Heidi, I would-
Uh, yes, through the chair, this is, uh, through the meeting group, the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, which involved the cities that, uh, the council president had alluded to, and it was run through the purchasing department, uh, at Sterling Heights, uh, but we had considerable discussion and review, uh, through our purchasing department, and personally, uh, talked to the, the people to check the whole process, and get this detailed, uh, as to, uh, the quantities and the, uh, number of cities involved, because what we're looking for is the best price, and so we wanted to make sure that this was a large enough group, uh, that it would give us an advantage, and it is.
Okay, thank you. And then consent agenda, item, uh, C. Looking at the three companies that were selected for, uh, the tree trimming and the removals, there's a significant difference between the Shop Brothers, and just wondering why it is in the contractor, two bidders, that the prices are sort of comparable as opposed to, uh-
Uh, through the chair, a good question. It came up, uh, when we were talking about this, and it has to do with the different assignments, uh, and, uh, the complexity and the equipment, et cetera, but we have expertise that could, that can go to that question.
Yeah, and in terms of Shop Brothers, uh, they're just going to be basically the, uh, standby, and they would be ran at an hourly, they would be ran at their DBH pricing. Uh, the first two are going to be the primary contractors. We need three to submit bids for the hazard treaty ordinance, uh, through the code enforcement department, so that's why we have three contractors. That is the only reason why we asked for that third one.
So the hourly rate, let's say a resident would need a tree trimmed or removed, the hourly rate by Shop Brothers would still be less than, uh, sixty-six dollars or, um, help me out if that's right.
Uh, you know, this is not, this is only, this is not for driving, this, this is only for trees in the right of way, or any dangerous tree that could be out there, the code enforcement would, he must have stayed down.
Well, something else, and I thought you said that we could use them for residents as well, if needed, residential.
If they apply for the hazard tree loan, if they have a hazardous tree situation, and they need to apply for our hazard tree loan program, that's where we would utilize three contractors, that enables three contractors to submit bids to, uh, the homeowner. The homeowner then drinks it back to code enforcement, and they evaluate to which one is the best pricing.
The homeowner would submit.
And, and they don't have to stay with that price, they can give, they can afford a better price, and they usually do, because it's competitive.
So they're not limited to these two?
Correct. Well, no, on, on the hazard tree loan program, yes.
They are. My question is, um, answer, so a resident, strictly speaking, a resident zone?
Okay, if you're talking just, just about a resident that wants their tree trimmed, say on your street.
Right.
Not a dangerous tree, it's just a normal tree in the sub, in, on their property. That, the, that amount right there does not go back to the resident. They can't use our, I mean, they can use them, but they might not get the same price.
Will it be higher or?
It's whatever's good, you know.
Could they?
Right. That is only, like I said, those are for trees that are in the right of way, that need to be trimmed, need to be taken down, storm damage that's in the right of way, or if there's a tree deemed dangerous by the city forester or code enforcement.
But a resident can use any tree, how do we, the question, a tree?
Sure, as long as they're licensed.
They don't use, uh, the, uh, the funds that are paid for?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Yes, that is, yes.
Yes, uh, on, uh, consent agenda, item D, uh, the award went to, uh, HP Brands of Belleville. My question is, is this an all or nothing? Because the second bidder, APAC Paper, from Allen Park, a thirty-three thousand dollar bid, there's only a dollar and fifty cents difference. Uh, I mean, that's cut pretty thin. Very. We had that discussion as well. Uh, and Ms. Townsend, if you could come up and help us with that. Terms of the award of the bid, uh, they get the bid, but that doesn't mean that we can't go to, uh, other suppliers.
Good evening. Uh, through the chair, to councilwoman Frazier, at this point, it is an all or nothing bid. We're trying to simplify the ordering and delivery process. Um, however, you're absolutely right, the prices were extremely close this year. Should something happen and, you know, we need to order from a different supplier, like the ten thousand dollars, obviously, we could utilize APAC, but that wasn't what we really need to do.
Through the chair, what we can do, um, because we, it is very close, is we can look at the, uh, the offerings of the second company, and if there are products, uh, that are lower in price, um, we can, uh, consider using them for giving them some of the business. But it's difficult, um, no matter how close it is, I mean, if you're going to have a bid, it's just the way it comes out.
Right. We've actually already done that. There's four items under contract, and the prices were extremely, extremely close. Um, this company is literally penny. We actually took the dust and place out briefly to get to the little bit.
Okay. We will do what we can for a bidder to take all stock.
Well, kind of maybe there was some, some reason that, uh, it was an all or nothing, that, that there were some economies of scale that if we split it between the two, that, uh, it would really cost us more than, than if we-
In, in working with the facilities maintenance department in terms of ordering, uh, and keeping track of who's supposed to get which product from which company, we decided to keep it.
Okay, yeah, spend more than a dollar and have six of the rest. Okay, thanks.
Also, I would like to bring to council's attention, as well as our viewers and folks in the audience, uh, the total cost is a thirteen percent decrease from previous contracts, so it's extremely competitive.
Counsel, thank you. Madam Chair, I approve consent agenda, C, D and E. This one?
Motion, item number two, signed by the court of honor, Mr. Jordan, all papers.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you, counsel.
And now, we're going back to the, um, presentation, and, and the mayor.
Good evening to council and to the viewing audiences. I'm honored today, um, for me to be able to recognize one of our business owners and leaders in our community tonight. I have had the pleasure of knowing this wonderful man for a number of years. Mr. Hoot McNeer, would you mind joining us? William?
Oh, William.
He is the owner, uh, president of the Southfield Starleakin Dealership. During the time, uh, that I have known him, I have witnessed his hard work ethic and your dedication to the city. His dealership was built in nineteen seventy, and was one of the select group of dealers from across the country to be honored this year in the National Autom- Automobile Association Convention in Las Vegas. Today, he owns six dealerships, with his two sons and two grandsons are also part of the business. So it gives me great honor to join, um, in this recognition of you, who wears the Time Dealer of the Year Award, one of the automobile industry's most prestigious and highly coveted honors. Recipients are among the nation's most successful auto dealers, who must also demonstrate a longstanding commitment to community service. Mr. McNeer, your support in wide range of organizations is a donor to religious, educational, sports, and health services and community services. Starleakin was built by Hoot in nineteen seventy, on a foundation of performance, customer treatment, and customer satisfaction. Now therefore, be it resolved, now the mayor of the city of Southfield, and our local county, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize Hoot McNeer as the recipient of the Time Dealer of the Year Award, and be it further resolved that the citizens of Southfield congratulate you for your dedication and to the automobile industry, and for your years of service to this community. I'm honored to present this to you, and say thank you for everything.
I thought we were going to be refunding my taxes. No, I ask you all very much, you've got a fine city, and I've done very well there. That city started from nothing, or number one, they can, they can work together, whole country, such as good areas to do business with. I got to tell you, uh, once a place, I kind of get you, it took us a half hour to find your city off. But, um, the city is a good city, I just forget about your paper. I never had the city, but over the police department, you know, that's, that's, I want to say something, I'd be proud of your city, as I am. I don't live in the area, I live up in Bloomfield, but I want to say something. I want to do some business in here, this place, and so, thank you very much. This panel here opened another high key session.
Yeah, yeah, you too.
Mr. Jordan, I was telling, uh, Mr. Frazier, I said, hey, if you feel old, because I remember approving that paint plan. I mean, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we come, next we come to the public hearing, fortunately agenda. Uh, I would like to mention, council rules that a person shall speak only to matters which are relevant to the agenda that we have considered by the council. Therefore, anyone that speaks, who comes to speak before public hearings, is to speak about the public hearing and other matters. I'd also like to point out that the city attorney has informed me that any action that disturbs the council meeting can be considered a violation of state law and city ordinance, and a person who conducts a disturbance can be required to leave the meeting. So I'd like to just come up by simply saying, I'm a councilor and mayor, would appreciate everyone who, um, encouraged me tonight in allowing our meeting to be held in a business like mine. And while I didn't say at the beginning of the meeting, if you have cell phones, please turn it off, uh, I would ask that you do that, turn it on if you're signing feature. And also, if there's any, if anyone has something to say that involves a staff member of our city, uh, an issue that you might have with the department, we would appreciate if you would not use the name of the individual, but address the issue with regard to the department as opposed to individual staff person. Uh, Mr. Crowe?
Good evening. Through the chair, our first special use public hearing is GP twelve thirty, which is a special use request of Mona Hamon Amoud from Iconic Design, on behalf of the owner, Dr. Petrie, to locate a three hundred and thirty-five square foot pharmacy inside the medical office building located at two five one three zero Southfield Road, on the east side of Southfield Road between Jeanette Street and Sherwood Circle in section twenty-four of the city. The subject property, as well as the property to the west across Southfield Road, is zone OS Office Service. The property to the north across Jeanette is zone RM, multiple family low rent. The properties to the east are zone R two, single family residential. The properties to the south across Sherwood Circle are zone B three, general business and the vehicular parking. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property contains the vacant office building. The property to the north across Jeanette is developed with elite chateau condominiums. The property to the west across Southfield Road is developed with the old stolen federal family credit union. The properties to the south across Sherwood Circle are developed with the retail center and apartment. The properties to the east are developed with single family housing, front in our Jeanette, and the chateau villa condominiums. The site contains one point one acres of land, there is two hundred and thirty-eight feet of frontage on Southfield Road with a depth of two hundred and seventeen. The special use request is to permit a pharmacy within a medical office in the OS Office Service owning district. Issues considered by the planning department during review of the special use were, one, the special use general standards and conditions of the OS Office Service District. Two, proposal is in accordance with the Southfield contract and master plan, noting local mixed use for this parcel. And three, the petitioners to implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department and Crime Prevention Bureau for guaranteeing site security. Planning Department received the special use request on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on these matters on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, and made a favorable recommendation. Tonight, we have Ms. Mona Amoud from Iconic Design to make a brief presentation, and we'll turn it over to you for public hearing, and we'll be available to answer any questions that the council may have.
So does the petitioners wish to come forward?
Good evening, my name is Mona Amoud, um, I live in Dearborn. Um, I'm here with the doctor, Dr. Petrie. I'm sorry, this is what we need to address by the, it's not a DM, it's a court in Dearborn for a one to four. I'm here, I'm here, Dr. Petrie. Um, he's using an entire building as a office, as medical offices, um, so he has, um, one floor for administration offices for doctors' offices.
Could you put the microphone up a little bit, so we can hear you?
And the first level is going to be, um, clinic and emergency clinic. So, um, we're only asking for three hundred, about three hundred spare feet for a pharmacy on the first level. It's going to be in the back of the building, it's not visible from the street, um, and it's going to be something that's going to complement the use of the entire building.
Is that, um, all right?
It's, it's basically for the use of the people who come to the, um, clinics, on their way out even purchase, um, prescription.
All right. Uh, the council may have questions, but first of all, I want to open the public hearings.
Okay.
So if you would like to sit down. Uh, declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone who would like to come forward to address this issue, please do so. Being none, I'm declaring the public hearing closed.
Madam Chair.
Let's start.
Sorry, I didn't give the young lady's name, I couldn't figure it, but she represented the doctor who owns the facilities, I correct?
Right.
Did you tell me what the hours of operation of the pharmacy would be?
Uh, they are determined from around seven o'clock in the margins of heaven at night, and we are securing the parking, and we're working with the fire department and the police department regarding that.
And, um, and the office, uh, hours, uh, in the building are the same?
Yes, the same.
Well, that, uh, seventy-seven, will you have a- Well, that, seventy-seven, will you have a registered pharmacist underneath?
I'm sorry?
Will you have a registered pharmacist underneath?
Yes, yes. We're already talking to somebody who's interested.
You only sell pharmaceuticals?
Yeah.
Or other items?
Just pharmaceutical, as far as I know.
Thank you. I would just ask you the question, council, because I just wondered, we have three pharmacies on tonight relocated in medical buildings, and I know there's one that was just put in at twelve, thirteen, twelve miles in Southfield that's like the village. I'm just wondering why the periphery of small pharmaceutical facilities are in these buildings when most, the loose drugstore went out because it was small and [inaudible]. Another pharmacy, I know that Mr. Lance went to Georgia's up there on twelve mile road in Everett, he quit making either, and he's been there for many years, now at CVS. I just wondered what's happening that we have so many at one time in this last year of four of them in the same vicinity?
Through the chair, Mr. Percassi. We're seeing this as a new business model for medical office buildings. This is a way to, for the doctors to generate additional income and also to provide a convenience specifically to their patients. And this trend is happening not just in Southfield, but all over the metro area.
It was stated, Mr. Porter, it was stated that this pharmacy would be in the rear of the building?
Through the chair, this is the floor plan, and the area that's highlighted in yellow shows a specific location on the floor plan. So it's located on the west, west side of the floor plan or the rear of the building. So it's not, there's no drive-through.
It's right out, isn't it? No. Okay. It doesn't matter, it's a rear of the building though. And will they, and someone who would like to get a prescription be able to go to that facility and have the prescription filled?
My understanding is, and from the ones I'm familiar with, the doctor's offices, the patients leaving the, their office visit, the prescription is sent over electronically, and it's available for them shortly as they walk out the door. That's the new business model.
Was that what, the only clients that, customers at that pharmacy would have?
I've been-
Those in the building?
Ninety-nine percent of their business is anticipated to be from doctors within the building itself.
Why can we ever want to regulate businesses? But I'm just finding this very difficult to understand. Are these small and tiny pharmacies are gonna make it when they're not encouraging outside prescriptions to be filled and just depending on the tenants and whoever patients are in that building? The building isn't that big. And while we have three, and there's one I said that would make the building, that was just put in, it seems like, I used to have to [inaudible] retail, how they can make it. But anyway, that's their, that's their idea that I will go over it, I guess.
Can I just add a comment? I, I've seen this pharmacy, I've used a pharmacy in many offices, small doctors' offices. Sometimes you only have one or two doctors practicing, and then you just have a window to just pick up your prescription on the way out. So it's kind of practical for, for people to use instead of having to go send a prescription somewhere else and have the drugs to pick up.
Do you have an idea of how many prescriptions you would fill a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan.
You know, I don't know, I wish it all for [inaudible] both way out, but the pattern of the small pharmacies and the Lincoln and the supermarkets have not been successful. If you're going to depend upon your, the patients from the doctors, it's not going to do any volume or make any money. You're gonna have to advertise to the outsiders to come in and bring their prescriptions into you also.
Dr. Petrie was supposed to be here tonight to answer questions. I don't know, I don't have all the answers to these questions, but to my understanding, it's gonna be full most of the time for just the people who come into the building. That doesn't mean that outside people are not allowed to come in and have a prescription there. But I'm just a designer here for the plan. I just don't see, what if it fails? It's only three hundred square feet, so he can replace it. If the supermarket of this [inaudible] can replace it eventually to be a house as part of the office building.
Mr. McInerney as well?
Thank you. I also noticed that it's proposed to be a sleep clinic, that's what's written in the documents that-
Yes, originally, that's the, that's the original plan, but I did talk to the doctor and asked about this. He said he might seem like he's ended up not having that.
Because I know that in certain sleep clinics, you could have patients up there, you know, for hours under tests or whatever, so I think it's a matter of also convenience particularly to a sleep clinic, you know, if you've been there for quite a while throughout the day doing tests and studies on, I've had friends that have sleep issues and have been in sleep clinics under study, you could be there for a while. So a matter of convenience, if you've been there for a while, just wanna pick up your prescription and go, makes more sense specifically to a sleep clinic.
Mr. Parker?
I wanted to comment that this is not a new concept. Forty years ago, I was a patient of Dr. Lloyd Paul, and he and his colleagues ran a little drugstore in part of their medical office. I know that when I was his patient, I would use the pharmacy because it was right on the way out to the car. It was very convenient, I didn't have to go someplace else. So I've seen a standard for this, and it's not, not new by coincidence, I've got two of the same request, and I always feel that it's not our job to regulate the competition. You'll do that through your pricing and the customers you attract. I also want to say that I am really pleased that we have this development happening of the medical offices in this building. It's been rather a poor barn for some time, and the landscaping has needed some improvement, and so I'm glad to see the building is gonna be occupied and have new life.
Thank you.
So, welcome.
Thank you. Bradshaw?
Yeah, I know we're not approving the site plan, but I'm a little confused about the site plan. Print that, that I got had a yellow outline that showed pharmacy waiting room. Is that where that is on that one?
Yes.
I don't understand, where's the pharmacy? I mean, you don't mix the waiting room and the drugs all in the same room.
There's, there's a, there's a counter that's labeled where the, where the pharmacy is.
Which pharmacy is pharmacy?
Right, right here. Right, right adjacent to the waiting room.
Well, the print that I have, because your shelf's empty, but this is all waiting room and pharmacy. There's, there's, and the counter shows the other side of the waiting room.
Right. I, I believe the, the area was just designated as where the public is, is coming in to pharmacy. Think of that, it's just, it's just the way it was outlined. But the total square footage is three hundred.
Okay, you're sending it to [inaudible] drugstore from there?
There's a wall and counter that separates the pharmacy itself from the waiting area where the patients pick up their prescriptions.
Okay, that's what they have, I'll go take it, I'll go take it.
Thank you.
And that's, like I said, we're not, we're not approving the site plan, but it is confusing. Thanks, Mr. McInerney.
You need a motion?
Yes, would you say that?
I'd like to move the special use permit for [inaudible].
GP twelve thirty.
Thank you. Twenty-five on thirty Southfield Road.
Motion, Mr. Spencer, the part of [inaudible] here, all of the mayor.
Hi, hi.
Mr. McInerney. I'd just like to add that I have seen this type of operation in all the facilities in those office buildings where there is an opportunity to pick up prescriptions right there for certain types of things. It's not really, it might be new to us, but it's not really new in the industry. The next public hearing is just the twelve thirty-one. Mr. Crowe?
Through the chair, as you stated, the next item is GP twelve thirty-one. A special use review request of Design Inc. on behalf of the owner Sundancing to prevent a non-industrial use or use not specifically related to manufacturing in the I-1 industrial zoning district. This request is made to facilitate the proposed construction of a new nineteen eighty-seven gross square foot Taco Bell restaurant located at two four oh two four West Nine Mile Road on the northwest corner of West Nine Mile Road and Telegraph Road. The existing Taco Bell is going to be torn down and a brand new one's gonna be built. The existing building's square footage is one thousand nine hundred seventy-six. The new building's square footage will just add two additional square feet to for a total nineteen hundred seventy-eight square feet. The existing building currently seats forty-five patrons. The new building will seat forty-two patrons, so just a slightly smaller seating area. The planning department received the special use request on September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on these matters on December fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, and made a favorable recommendation. I have a small, a brief video to show the council at this time.
The use request of Design Incorporated on behalf of the owner Sundancing Incorporated to permit a non-industrial use or use not specifically related to manufacturing within the I-1 industrial zoning district in order to construct a new Taco Bell restaurant. The property is located at the northwest corner of Telegraph and Nine Mile Road at two four zero two four West Nine Mile Road in section twenty-nine of the city. The subject property, as well as the property to the northwest, south across Nine Mile Road, and to the east across Telegraph Road, is zone I-1 industrial. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is occupied with an existing Taco Bell restaurant. The property to the north is developed with the Bank of America. The property to the west is developed with Mandy's Restaurant. The property to the south across Nine Mile Road is developed with a Marathon Gas Station and a Citizens Bank. The property to the east across Telegraph Road is developed with a White Castle Restaurant. The site contains point six four acres of land. There is one hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Nine Mile Road and a depth of one hundred and eighty-seven point zero seven feet. The special use request is to permit a non-industrial use or use not specifically related to manufacturing within the I-1 industrial zoning district. The proposed site plan indicates the demolition of the existing Taco Bell restaurant and the construction of a new one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven gross square foot Taco Bell restaurant. The parking required for the development is twenty-two spaces with twenty-two provided on-site. The square footage of land being provided exceeds the requirements of the zoning ordinance. However, a thirty-eight foot waiver will be required from the zoning board of appeals for depth of land being spaced along Nine Mile Road. The elevations show a mix of bricks, stone, and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were the special use general standards and conditions of the I-1 industrial zoning district. Pedestrian access from Nine Mile Road and from Telegraph Road. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting technology corridor tub area for this parcel, which includes secondary regional mixed uses. On-site stormwater [inaudible]. And the petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield City Department
We have a representative of Taco Bell here tonight to make a brief presentation and help you available to answer any questions that the council may have.
Good evening. My name is James Barnwell with Design Incorporated, two one eight three [inaudible] Michigan. Presentation planner was pretty thorough. The owner, Sundancing Incorporated, is looking at this property and the building, it's been there for thirty years. There's been improvements in the operations and the equipment that's available to him, and also an overriding issue is that the new corporate standards and image that they're trying to project at Taco Bell is doing the old mission style and the stucco buildings and present a little more upscale drive-through restaurant. So what we're proposing is basically demolishing the existing building in its entirety and reconstructing it to the new standards. Is there a question? My name's-
Great. I'm excited for the public hearing ultimately, if there are any questions that you can [inaudible]. Want to say something?
Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Terry Crowe mentioned that there was a public hearing, I think you said on December the fifteenth. There was no council meeting on December the fifteenth. If my memory serves me correct, the council meeting was December fifth, December twelfth, and maybe the nineteenth. So could you state officially on the record when the public hearing was? Because I don't remember this public hearing. And then also too, previously council talked about the access, say, turning in if you're coming south on Telegraph into the parking lot and then being able to exit out on Nine Mile, and they talked about that very thing as it related to a couple of gas stations in the city of Southfield. I want to know, increasing the square footage, is that going to pose a problem? Being able to enter one way and also enter the other way? Turning, if you're coming down Nine Mile Road headed west, is it going to pose a problem turning in right with people trying to exit out of that same parking lot since we've talked about it before? And this is just something that I've heard you guys talk about when it was a restaurant. I hope that Taco Bell will explore the option of improving the quality of beef that they use and not use the industry standard to go along with your beautiful new corporate image that you are trying to display. And I thought-
Would you like to answer any questions about that, any interest in exit?
Just to clarify, I had stated that a public hearing was held on December fourteenth. That was a public hearing that was held by the Planning Commission, not the city council. The overall square footage increase is two square feet, but a reduction of two seats. And the, the new layout takes into account turning radiuses and traffic going south on Telegraph and westbound on Nine Mile, it's a much better flow. We took several times reviewing the various drive-through locations and probably went through about four or five different iterations of the site plan to come up with something that the traffic engineering in the city could live with.
So it has some review side traffic [inaudible] engineering has been given their sample control.
That's correct.
Thank you. If there's no, anyone who wants to take a public hearing, the public's been closed. Mr. Crowe?
Is available, if there's any questions from the council?
I do have Mr. Lance [inaudible] and I guess the questions can answer as well, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, it wasn't real clear on the, on the print that I have, but-
It wasn't real clear on the prints that I have, but I think that I had figured out the ordering place is down on the southwest corner of the building. That's correct. It is what it was. Okay. Also, there's only one very free parking space. Is that, is that part of the law? Because of seating, it seems like a pretty skinny amount of handicap parking.
Through, through the chair?
Yeah.
It's based on the total number of parking spaces that are provided. So the first very free out of twenty-five is a van-accessible very free parking space. And then it increases depending on the total number of parking spaces that are part of the line.
Okay. Also, is there a door on the east side of the building? Because they have the angle parking on the east side of the building, no, that's the western. Went up alone.
Can you point at Telegraph on these photos?
You're looking at the east side, there's the, I think, the front side, the north side, or excuse me.
On the south side, on the south side, where it is right now.
And the left.
South side.
South and left side.
Okay, right now it's on the south and east side, but it's going to change to the south and west side.
Yeah, and right with window.
On the east side, where the, okay. The reason I say that is there are parking spaces on, so anybody parks over those spaces, they have to walk all the way around to the south side of the building to get in from their guests.
Right.
Right. And I just have a technical question for Mr. Crowe. And that is, if they already have approval to have a building there, they're going to tear down to rebuild another building, why do we have to reapprove a special use?
Through the chair, because as you are aware, this isn't an industrial district and it's a non-industrial use. And because it was a complete redo, we felt that it should come back to the council for special use approval. I guess we could have argued that, or had that discussion with the city attorney's office, but we just felt that since it was a complete redo, we wanted the council to have the ability to review it. If that, if my memory serves me, it also could be that, looking through the files, it didn't have the proper approvals because the store predated this type of approval.
Oh, okay.
And that, that certainly don't make more sense to me not having anything about it.
It seems to me like an extra step if they're already had the approval, but because they're just going to tear down and build a better one in the same spot.
It's been there thirty years and it could very well be that it didn't get a special use approval thirty years ago because of the zoning ordinance or the use.
There was another kind of a Mexican restaurant before it became a dollar.
And that might be the case. There was something that triggered it.
Okay, right.
And we certainly don't like to make them go through extra steps if we can help it.
Mr. Crowe, does this public council like something?
No, because it's located in the industrial district, so it does not trigger site plan review.
Okay. Are you getting some questions along with that?
Sure.
All right, the next person would like to, Mr. Jordan.
Just one question to the petitioner. What's the planned demolition date and rebuild date for the site?
Typically, we'd like to start in March or April here, you know, after we get all the approvals, of course, in March. And historically, the last five or six we've done, it takes less than ninety days to complete.
Thank you. Mr. Law?
So, Mr. Jordan?
Oh, all right. I think, I think what Mr. Crowe is trying to say, because it's a light and no drill, is the planners of redo, basically.
That's correct.
Right. Just wanted to clarify that.
But we did bring the site plans just for orientation purposes.
Right, right, I understand. But there is some exception to the site plan.
Right, it's the only district.
There are certain areas, the zoning districts, that certain areas of the planners have some restrictions that goes with the site plan.
That's correct.
All right. I guess that's it.
Do you have any more?
Yes, very much.
I'm a little approval of site plan, GP.
Special use?
Our special use permit has had a request, GP one two three one.
Lord, Lord.
Motion, Mr. Snyder, supported by Mr. Fraser, on Facebook, if you'd like to say that. opposed? Motion, House of attorneys. Special use of that road. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, through the chair. Our next item is GP twelve thirty-two, special use request of Cadilla Pharmacy on behalf of the owner, Dr. Rupda, to permit a pharmacy and prescription center located in or near medical offices, medical clinics, hospitals, convalescent, or nursing homes, or similar facilities in the O.S. Office Service zoning district. This request is made to facilitate the operation of a one thousand two hundred and eighty-three square foot pharmacy within the existing medical office building located at two three eight three two Southfield Road. Planning department received a special use request on November ninth, two thousand eleven. The planning commission held a public hearing on these matters on December fourteenth, two thousand eleven, and made a favorable recommendation. I'd like to present a brief video to the council.
Proceed on behalf of the owner, Dr. Kamal Rupda, to permit a pharmacy and prescription center use within an existing medical office building in the O.S. Office Service zoning district. The property is located on the southeast corner of Southfield Road in Mount Vernon at two three eight three two Southfield Road in section twenty-five of the city. The subject property as well as the properties to the west across Southfield Road to the east and to the south is known O.S. Office Service. The properties to the north across Mount Vernon is known O.S. Office Service and E.R.O. Education Research Office. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed with an existing medical office building. The property to the north across Mount Vernon is developed with a Love and Care Hospital and a parking lot for the Century Office Plaza. Property to the west across Southfield Road is developed with the Pollock Academic Center. The property to the south is developed with the International Gospel of the Libra Church. The property to the east is developed with the driveway from the church and single-family residential uses farther east, fronting Mount Vernon. The site contains one point eight seven acres of land. There's two hundred feet of frontage on Southfield Road and a depth of two hundred and sixty feet. The special use request is to permit a pharmacy and prescription center within an existing medical office building in the O.S. Office Service zoning district. The proposed site plan indicates the establishment of a one thousand two hundred and eighty-three gross square foot pharmacy within the existing medical office building at two three eight three two Southfield Road. The parking required for the development is thirty spaces with forty-eight provided onsite. The square footage of landscaping provided exceeds the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Elevations are to remain the same. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were the special use general standards and conditions of the O.S. Office Service zoning district. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting local mixed use for the parcel, and the petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
We have the pharmacist here tonight to make a brief presentation and will be available to answer questions after the public hearing.
Did you wish to say anything before we open the public hearing?
Oh, hello.
Nothing? All right. Then I declare a public hearing open. If there's anyone that wishes to address the petition. So would you please give your name and address for the record?
Madam Chairman, my name is Gerard Mullin. Since nineteen sixty-eight, I own the seventeen eight eighty, will be three hundred and sixty-five feet south to the petitioner. I wish to lodge three legal challenges to this public hearing. As you will see, any one of these three challenges concludes this council from conducting business on this petition this evening. Challenge number one is due to the failure of Southfield City Council.
Excuse me, sir, we can't hear you, could you?
Oh, okay.
Maybe try to pull that up a little bit closer to you, that might help. It won't pull up. Do you want to pull it over?
Okay, hear me now?
That's good, that's good.
Okay, let me start over again. Legal challenge number one is due to the failure of the Southfield City Council to publish a proper legal notice regarding this petition. Counsel, only these sites has its controlling authority for this public hearing. Article eighteen, section five point one six nine, the general decision section B three. In actuality, the petition's site is located in an O.S. service district. The correct citation that counsel should have referred to but failed to was Article nine, section five point one oh four, the office service district section. Therefore, counsel is not empowered tonight to act on this petition. Paraphractically, I'd like to point out to counsel that this error is the rule, not the exception. Every, every legal notice that counsel has published in the last six months, without exception, contains at least one error. For example, let's take tonight's agenda. Counsel, only these sites have the wrong control authority in every legal notice for all four tonight's petitions. GP twelve thirty should be Article nine, section five point one oh four. GP twelve thirty-one should be Article twenty, section five point one eight five. GP twelve thirty-two should be Article nine, section five point one oh four. GP twelve thirty-three should be Article twenty, section five point one six, one eight Legal challenge number two is due to the failure of Southfield Planning Commission to publish a proper legal notice regarding this petition. The commission's legal notice was published illegally two days outside the prescribed statutory timeline as mandated by chapter forty-five, article four, section five point two two dash one. Hence, the petition recommendation to counsel has no legal standing at this public hearing. Therefore, counsel cannot act on this petition tonight. Paraphractically, I'd like to point out to counsel, this error is the rule, not the exception. Every, every legal notice that the commission has published in the last three years, without exception, contains this error that is published illegally outside the prescribed statutory timeline. And finally, legal challenge number three is due to the unlawful behavior of the Southfield planning department and not allowing me to inspect the public file for this evening's public hearing. On December second, two thousand eleven, I asked both the building and planning departments if I could inspect their respective public file regarding the petition. Both departments denied my request, and both departments said I needed to file a Freedom of Information request, a FOIA, with the city clerk's office in order to inspect these files. On January thirteenth, two thousand twelve, I submitted a FOIA request regarding both files. It was rejected. The city clerk told me no FOIA was needed to inspect either file. Then she called on my behalf to the building department and obtained the information that I had saw regarding the building department's file, and she wrote it on the back of my FOIA request. Yet to this very day, I am still denied access to the planning department's public file regarding this petition. It is a sad day for democracy when I, John Two Bullock, can't inspect the public file for this evening's public hearing. Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Crowe, do you have any comments? Do you have any comments that you want to make? And I'd like to address the city attorney, also on the mission.
I'll, I'll fairly do some in reverse order. It's our policy that we do not allow the public to review any site plan files unless they follow the procedures of requesting a FOIA and the proper man. So I'm not aware that, that the FOIA was received in time for review for tonight's meeting. I have to review my files, but that's our standard policy, is that we have to make sure that there's no sensitive information in the files. We review that with the city attorney's office before we make that available to the public. We're required through public trust to ensure that there's no damage to the files and that they're properly recorded and paper trails established before you review them to the public. I believe the building department's following the same policy.
Ms. Ward, I think we need you to weigh in on the public file.
I'm not aware that a FOIA request was submitted. We could nothing just come through our office indicating that somebody was wanting to review the records. So typically, they would be, they would go to the FOIA coordinator, Mr. Sinclair, and then there would be some indication to our office that there was a FOIA, and we would review it for purposes of whether there were any exceptions that were applied. I, I, I'm not seeing.
Well, the big issue is, my personal issue is the state of the way they were, the way it was published.
Oh, you.
And the references, and that's.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about FOIA, because Mr. Crowe hadn't gone through that now just yet.
The, the second item is that we're required to have it published fifteen days prior to the meeting. And as far as I'm aware, then we've, we've met that statutory requirement. So if, if we haven't, I'd have to investigate what to, our procedure is fifteen days prior to the meeting has to be published. And we, we trigger all of our submitted to the paper in accordance with that fifteen-day rule requirement. I'm not aware of what's violating that one.
The orders were recorded fifteen days, so I'm not a special use criminal.
Well, we, we did the fifteen days, and then. Well, we had, you didn't answer, um, Chair, we didn't answer whether or not it's legally advertised.
Did I, did I?
It's been lost our attention, so I think I'm sorry.
Um, this item was advertised properly. I'm not sure if it was the fifteen, or it may have been sixteen days prior to. We did have a discussion at the counter, and at one time, we used to have two dates in which to publish legal notices. Now there's the one day, the server and etc. used to publish on Thursday from Sunday. Now it's Sunday. So my understanding that we were in compliance with the fifteen day allocation, that how we usually publish all of our notices.
Well, the allocation, we're, we're not even following the right portion of the, of the statute to, to make the, that we're not in compliance with this, and I think we need some kind of a date, like whether we move forward on this.
It's a black light.
I'm sorry?
It's a black light, published seventeen days, the limit is five to fifteen. It's right here. You owe it.
I don't understand what you're saying.
And you let you come up and.
Yeah, come up to the microphone, please.
Okay.
Is there, do you wish for time? Is there any time?
These are your rules, they're not mine. Okay?
But I'm interested in what you're specifically saying was incorrect.
Oh, what was incorrect is published seventeen days. If you look at the published date, it's November twenty-seventh. The hearing was December fourteen. That's a difference of seventeen days. You.
If I, if I could correct the record, this was, this note. Um, if I, if I could correct the record, this was, this notice was published on January eighth.
No, we're not, we're talking two different things. We're talking two different...
The planning commission, I thought you meant the notice in Fort Hillsville.
No.
Okay, you're talking the planning commission notice?
Right.
I am sorry, I can't correct you.
Right. Your, your, all, all yours are fifteen days, it's published on Sunday.
But you're talking about what came before the planning commission?
Yes.
And how does that affect what we're doing this evening?
Because you, that, their ruling, their recommendation would be going void. Because they were...
I'm adj, I want to address, I'm addressing the city attorney, because it's all out and on, Ms. Ward, but that's what we're doing this evening. They're recommending, Bobby.
I, I believe, I believe you're speaking, and I don't have the notice in front of me, so, but I believe you're saying that the notice for the public hearing tonight?
No, the planning.
Planning, I'm sure.
Oh, the planning commission.
Okay, in December. The, the notice in terms of the, the public hearing tonight, you got to say, not less than five days, not more than fifteen days. But you're talking about a notice from the planning commission?
It's identical of stipulation for planning.
It does, it does say the same thing, but without the notice in front of us to see what the dates are, I...
Right, I know it.
I don't have it.
Can I hand it to you? I mean...
No, you, go ahead, you can hand it to her, let me, let me...
Uh, sir, we're not trying to make things difficult, we're trying to clarify what you're saying. Go, this minute, we're trying to clarify what you're saying, and we're trying to act properly up here. So we have to get some legal advice, and whoever, maybe in the clerk, we try to put this all together so we can act properly tonight and have the, and not be illegal. So relax, and let's hope to our process of, of trying to figure out what we have to do to either act on this or not, okay?
This, by this document, it would indicate that the public hearing from the planning commission was held, or was scheduled to be held on December fourteenth, and it was published on November twenty-seventh. That would, there are, there, that would be seventeen days, more than fifteen. So that would be an issue with, uh, the notice requirements that's up for the, in the ordinance.
True, the Chair.
And how does that affect what we're doing tonight? Well, does that make what we're doing illegal?
If it, if it was not properly noticed in front of the planning commission, I think it should have been properly noticed in front of the planning commission. Correct.
True, the Chair.
Mr. Crowe?
We believe we followed proper procedure. Um, I would like an opportunity to review the state statute. I believe the, um, the confusion here is that the ordinance, zoning ordinance laying within regards to public publication may not have been updated to be consistent with the state statute. Um, I, I believe we are following the state statute, which now states minimum of fifteen days. Um, I can't answer that question tonight, but I'm confident that we've followed the proper procedures with regards to public hearing notices.
I think, I think, to the Chair, if, if the matter was simply postponed tonight, we'll take a look at the notices when they were published, we'll look at everything, and then we will come back with a recommendation as to whether we need to re-notice it or we're in compliance.
That's what I've been trying to say, and couldn't get the floor.
Well, that's what we're pretending, just from the...
Mr. Ward, make a motion.
Mr. Mullin also mentioned that there seems to be some nomenclature errors, um, that...
Yes, I know he did.
The numbers, um, I don't know if it's where you're getting the code from, if it's the website, from the website?
Oh, no, you, you're published, this is what you published.
Okay, because you have a hard copy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I, I believe, um, I, I know sometimes there's been a discrepancy between what's on the website and what's in the hard copy.
On the top of the website, I say here four for four, tonight.
Yeah.
Every, every petition tonight is an error. You cited the wrong control authority. Every, every notice for the last six months that you have, you've generated is an error.
Okay.
As long as, there's an error in everyone.
Well, we need to clear that up, um, obviously. Um, I have another suggestion as well. Um, I, I don't know why we continue to place this notice in the etc. when we have paper that goes to every single hall in Southfield. If we really wanted to notify our community, um, uh, I would suggest that we use the Southfield Fund, which goes directly home, so that, um, we do have broader, um, notification to the public.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cybert, at the beginning of each year, the constitution has made what our legal notices and where they should be, so...
I've done it.
No, we haven't, we've done it.
Mr. Land, want to, Ms. Ward?
Okay, what I see here is something that's all mixed up. I don't know whether the planning department or the clerk, I don't know. I would suggest we postpone it, and I want to be sure to examine the records if it goes to legal, just straighten it out, because we can't make a decision tonight. We're going to issue here, because here's the real problem. Here's a FOIA. I could walk in ten years ago in the building department to get any piece of information I wanted. In fact, they were more than helpful.
That's changed, we have no people here.
No people?
Change.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't have an excuse.
I know it.
I know.
I know that.
Now, those people should be informed, because I've been given nothing but problems, and I've been working on this for two months.
We have everybody taking all the power, or so many different powers. That's the problem with this city, huh?
I make a motion to postpone it until we can get to the bottom of this, you know, the legal department or the correct legal advice, and I'd like to see paperwork, too.
Ms. Ward, what would be the further time to support this, too, like, um...
They certainly can put it to the next regular, we would have an answer by then.
If I'm in time for the meeting, can we do that?
Okay, Ward?
All right, Mr. Cybert, motion?
Uh, I have a motion by the board.
Your, your motion, your support, is that correct? All right. Motion by Mr. Land, supporting, I think, Mr. Cybert, postponement to the next regular meeting. May I just get a call, please?
It'd be, it'd have to be advertised, it's, uh, it'd have to be either more than five or...
Well, we'll, we'll have to work it out.
Or whatever the state statute indicates would supersede our charge, I think, there.
That's correct. I don't know, I'm not interested.
If, if we find, if the, has the public hearing tonight been closed?
No.
No, no, I need to...
If we find that the public hearing was properly noted tonight, then, then we comply. It's only if we find that, that something was done in terms of the timing of the notice that we would reset for another, another public hearing.
We don't need close to what I think.
I, I, I think if somebody else wants to speak.
Well, I haven't seen anyone else that wants, um...
Can I have a test question?
Yes.
Is this kind of a deal where I, 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 this, you table and send a table with us, and we never, I never find out it comes back, oh, no?
No, we're trying to get to the bottom of it, that's the whole idea.
Well, how will I be notified? In other words, will I be given a proper legal notice?
Well, he's saying that everything's...
We need to make sure they get the...
Oh, yeah, we, we can make sure, we can, we can make sure that you're notified if you give us...
Now, I've been through this before, where I've been told, you're going to know, of course, this goes back twenty-five, maybe years, same thing, never got a notice.
Twenty-five years ago?
That's a long time ago.
Well, that's not going to happen.
Well, but, we're, we can't go that much five years.
I just mentioned it.
Give us...
No, I just mentioned it.
Listen to me, listen to me, I need your name and best and telephone number, so that we can, if you're giving, if you're already giving, I think, your name and address.
Right.
If you want to give telephone number to the lady sitting here, the clerk, contact us.
She's got my number, I give it to her again.
All right, all right. All right?
You want me to walk over there?
Yeah, go ahead, walk over there with the telephone.
Ms. Ward?
Just for clarification, uh, is, is the matter is being postponed, so the, the public hearing will remain open?
All right, we will ask for it.
All right.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. ...
Madam Chair, I, I also would like, uh, a city attorney to, um, to review the, um, availability of files, and to, you know, these, here are many requests, files are inundated with requests. Uh, I'd like to really know if our files are open or closed now under any statute, federal or state or whatever, because now we have FOIA, if we never had that before.
Well, the, the, the proper request to look through records and give the department the opportunity to get somebody to go through and find the records, is if a FOIA request is made, the statute would then say that the city would respond within fifty, or five days, to allow somebody to either inspect or, or have copies of those records made, or if, if the city needs additional time, they can ask for a mandatory extension.
Are there exceptions?
Well, there, there are all kinds of items that, that are exempted from disclosure under the FOIA statute. And that is one reason that there is a time lag in there, so that the city can go through those documents and make sure that those items that are exempt are, are not released. And so that's the process. And I, again, if, if somebody has, has done a FOIA request, he usually goes to the city clerk and it's processed from there.
Well, we're going to have to review our files.
Yeah, I, I never knew there are certain, uh, certain type of information sent from the public, to the trans town and city, it was all...
Well, for example, there are law enforcement investigations.
Well, I'm not talking about law enforcement.
But there's all the type of exemptions that are there in the law, and that, and that is, that is the analysis that is undertaken, that if, if items are exempt under the law, as the legislature has determined in terms of the specific exemption, then those items are, are not released. That, that is the process.
That includes, uh, zoning and all that?
There may or may not be any exemptions with respect to a zoning file, but there's at least an opportunity for a...
Let's, let's find out.
A staff person to go through and get the file and, and make sure the documents are there, and it's possible to...
Well, I've been saying to the board to be as open as possible, uh, I'm very familiar with the FOIA law, I understand the exemption, for instance, the lawsuit, uh, current litigation, uh, is exempt, but, um, I, I don't think we should be fighting or blocking our citizens' active to information, especially Mr. Mullin got an invitation to come to the planning commission, because he lives, well, within the radius of, of this type of question, so there must be something wrong here, then.
Well, we don't know.
It doesn't make sense to me.
Uh, this is Chair, to our city attorney, this particular instrument that was made to the FOIA request, are we going to allow, because it seems as if they got these complicated information, so at this point, are we going to allow them to have access to the files or what can happen if this is postponed?
I would certainly, if, if there hasn't been a written FOIA request made, then it hasn't gone to the city clerk and, and then there's a response given, I... If I could respond, and Mr. Mullin, please correct me, he had a simple question on whether, um, there was any activity going on in the building, a particular location, and he said he was told to come and submit a FOIA request, and he wanted to know, um, if any building permit had been pulled on that particular portion of the building. Um, I, in turn, contacted the building department, and I spoke to the building, um, the assistant building director, and asked if there was any activity. They were familiar with the situation. They later on that day contacted him, and I believe the matter was resolved. It was a very simple situation, um, if you'd like to come up and confirm it. It's not that the FOIA was denied, it was something that could be answered in less, I think it was less than five minutes, one telephone call, and in this particular situation, why should you put a FOIA in when it was a simple, I made, I made one telephone call and it was answered? Mr. Mullin, is that correct?
Yes, let, let me tell you how silly this is. Because years ago, you walked in, you looked at a file, like, I'll give you an example, right next door is the church. So when I had church, it went to the CBA six years ago. I looked at their file, I opened it up, closed it, they, and I, they're putting in a sign, that I just wanted to be familiar with the sign, and they gave me these rocks all night and stuff for me. It was very simple. Now I go in December second, and they say no. So I, I filled out for both, I filled out for both the building and for the planning, it's right here, both. And clerk banks returned it to me, says you don't need a FOIA file, just like I, I said on my presentation. This is the silliness of it, is, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't go and also this research, where I see, see, you screwed up, excuse the expression, uh, all, all, all your, uh, legal notices, it's a matter of record, you can't deny it. I mean, they're all wrong. That's kind of, that's pretty embarrassing, and if, while I'm at it, you got a lot of grammar problems with your notices, foot for feet, to win with a, with a hyphen, that's pretty sad. Look at Mesa Village, whoever does their notices is letter perfect, letter perfect. Say yourself, you never put out good notice, period, you should be embarrassed. And I'm somebody that got a C in high school English. See what I'm saying? You look, look at my notice, this is to win with a, with a hyphen, find a dictionary that's got a hyphen, to win, to win man for, it's not a hyphenated word. It's not a hyphenated word. Foot, you learn, you learn in kindergarten, you got one foot, two feet. But look, I read your notices, aren't you embarrassed? I mean, here you have the former deputy superintendent of the school system. I guess we don't set a high standard. Doing, I would be embarrassed. Every time I look at the, I, I get a notice, this goes back years, 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 I look at the notice, I can't believe it, my high school teacher wasn't flumping, he flumped me. I think he flunked, in my opinion. He's no attention to detail, all his stuff is done in your name, in your name. Don't you approve of your, your work? You got every, foot for four, every notice is foot for four. You, you cited the wrong control authority. Now ask the city planner, am I right or am I right? Am I right, am I right?
I, I'll have to investigate, sir.
There's nothing, it's a matter of, it's a matter of, oh, it's, it's right there, right on the, signing, the time of hearing goes, I have it.
Mr. Ryan?
Madam Chair, let me, let me, uh, say this, I mean, there's a, you know, as a member of this city for over forty-three years, and, you know, I don't read the legal notices, I, uh, think that coming for us, and we assume they are accurate, uh, until somebody indicates they aren't.
I mean, nobody...
Yes, but I said, I don't think you should sit there in the middle of the city, because you're too afraid of the city, to be too little, and, and talk about our ability to, to expel and to...
I'm not...
Whatever lines, it makes you laugh, and I don't argue with you, but if it had been a very simple thing for you to walk in, said, visit for it, that, you know, this isn't air, who's ever checking the, I mean, you're a citizen of the city. I mean, it's, it's an obligation of every citizen of the city, if they see something wrong, they say something. And, and you want to come here and make this thing, and embarrass people, and that's what your intention is, it's fine, I'll say it, but I, I guess, you know, there's mistakes made, nobody, everybody is human, and I don't know who, who friends I have, but I think it's the obligation of someone to see something wrong, to bring the attention to those who write.
That's why I went to the building department.
Well, if you did come to the clerk, you didn't come to the council, you didn't, you just, uh, here before us tonight, you could have said very plainly, I wish you would review your legal advertisement, because there are things that are wrong, that'd be something, and we would review it. We do respond to...
Oh, you don't respond now, you have to.
No, I respond whether, whether you're here or not, a telephone call would be the same.
I brought, I brought this up before, okay, I brought this up...
It's never been before made and brought anything up of this sort, so please don't say something is not true. And I've been here forty-three years, I don't even think I've bet you.
Yes, I have.
Well, I don't even...
We had a good conversation, nineteen ninety-six. You're a mayor, I voted for you, every time.
Adam Chair?
Mr. Mullin.
Thank you for the recognition. Uh, had a lot of talking, I, there were two things that were kind of rolled over that I want to rewind and kind of readdress. Number one was that there's the potential that state law... Number one was that there's the potential that state law supersedes whatever is in the zoning book anyway. And number two, I want to rewind to what Ms. Ward said, that this meeting that we're in today was properly noticed, correct, or that everything was done correctly. So, if we can move forward, I know there was talk of postponing, but an alternate route could be if we move forward with the vote, because I disagree with anything specific to the actual meet of the project that is in opposition. If we can move forward and we vote to approve or deny, and Mr. Crook just simply checks and sees the state statute trumps what's in our zoning ordinance, we've done nothing wrong. So, I, we could postpone, and I take your concern seriously, that's why I think there's a, there is a quick fix, but we could postpone, or we could move forward and quickly find out tomorrow.
Here's what I think the situation-
Either way, we're going to have to go back.
Here's what I think the situation is.
Go ahead.
I believe that the state statute is a white window, okay? South Hill decided to approve the window, had to set a higher standard. See, I believe the standard, better say statute is probably twenty days out, or more, okay?
That still trumps whatever-
No, no, setting a higher standard doesn't trump, you got your logic backwards. Setting a higher standard does not trump state law.
Yes.
I'll say attorney.
Madam Chair, I think this is a family, a council discussion, and now we're engaging-
I know that, I know that, I know that. Oh, Mr.-
I mentioned, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Lam.
All right, listening, I've been here a long time too. When Nick was here, Nick Banda, remember the other plan?
Yes.
I had many, many people come to me, they wanted to go to the planning department, they had a complaint. So, I took them to the planning department, and that's what did, then we straightened it out. We never had a problem. All of a sudden, when somebody wants an information, Nick would go to that, bring out the file, and show this, and make a decision, right or wrong. We had employees, all of a sudden, modern technology, no, or assumed power by employees here, that we need a FOIA.
Right, three years ago, three years ago I had a problem.
We've got to make some money, so we need a FOIA.
I had a problem with the planning department. We went to the board meeting, and Nick came in, and every commissioner, all seven out of seven were against me, he came in in twenty seconds and solved the problem. He says, we do this all the time. He solved it like that. They built the wall, I mean, I could-
I used to go in too. Information, they went to the back, they gave me the information, and I gave it to my constituents.
Right, see, there's something, you got to know the right person.
Why all, why what's going on here is embarrassing, it is stupid. So, let's postpone this thing and give it to the legal department, as the rules state that, and the planner would like it, or the council, and let's get rid of it. All right, I'll call the call that I would propose, I made a motion.
A motion to postpone, I'm showing the board.
I want to postpone to the next regular meeting.
Postpone.
To the next meeting, to the next regular meeting.
All right.
Excuse me, may I comment? Actually, I don't know what the problem this guy has, he has the same problem in the planning commission meeting too. Everything is going according to the planning and legalized. I made this application in month of October, October, there's both pharmacy and urgent care, they both applied for these locations. And in October, the planning, the plan which I already approved, the working permit for urgent care, constraints, urgent care just already open. And this is only for the pharmacy, and we also apply at the same time, and as for the special request, we fill out the form, the, whatever the legalized document, they are already issued on the time zone, and, you know, everything happens, what happens is according to timeline and schedule, I don't know what's the problem he has, and because of that, my business is suffering. So, you know, should I have to wait against another three or four months for the same, same thing?
No, 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 no.
This is, he has the same problem, you can see the video recording in the planning commission, he has the same thing, and this is totally, I don't want to say anything.
I understand what you're saying.
I don't know, he has any problem with the pharmacy, or he has a problem with the planning commission, well, that's the problem of it.
Sir, I understand, and we're going to, we're going to vote on the motion to postpone. No, no, please, we're done with that. No, I don't want to hear that, Norm, we're having a motion to postpone. All right, we have a motion on the floor?
The public hearing is still open.
The public hearing-
And, sorry, all, and, just to help the gentleman of the petition, we have a Tuesday twenty-third, a meeting on the thirtieth, that is, committed a hold in seven days, so we'll fit in, if we have to do whatever we have to do to keep it legal, we'll bring this individual back on the thirtieth, is that all right, Sue?
Six months. Of course, another day ago.
I already waited for four months, I don't know how long I haven't waited.
One week, one week.
Be one week, Monday. One whole week. We want to make sure that we're on the right, make sure there's, you know, fact, allegation that we're doing something wrong, and we want to make sure that what we see and the proof we knew is legally right.
But it's not correct if we're going to be enough time to publish, be given up, known to the public. We're saying one week, only to give ourselves ample time if that-
So, postpone for the attorney, Ms. Ward, would you turn that?
Sorry, the question was, if we have to re-notify, we not postponed the public hearing, we're just putting it in a way, but we can go on next meeting, we're postponing.
Should we make the meeting?
She's saying, do we have to re-notify? Well, I thought what we could do is we could look at the situation, report back next meeting, which is the thirtieth. If we need to, we, so the next regular is February-
But he's been hurt by this delay, because, you know, we, he is telling us, these are things we've not given.
Not at the public hearing, I don't think we have. We still have to make sure that we comply with all the notes, partner. So, is he going forward, or is it that we didn't do it the way that was, to make sure we did it correctly, or are we having to go forward and start the process again, or anything? Without looking at the date of when everything was published and what references there were to the notices, it's impossible to say. So, that's what I thought we would look at, sit down with the planning, we'll look at the notices, the date they were published, and see whether the notices were properly published. If they were not, then I would say what we should do after we report back, report back to next Monday on the thirtieth, we could send out the new notices for the February meeting, and we would make sure that they are done properly.
But will no one like this, maybe?
Right, but what this gentleman's saying is that everything we've been, all the people we've noticed are, these things are all wrong.
Better to do it legal than have to do it over and over again, so-
All right, so we'll postpone until Monday, we'll report to us-
From Monday thirty.
We'll report back to us on Monday. All right, so that's a motion on the floor, postpone for the next meeting.
Yes, tell me, what are we postponing now?
We're postponing the matter, and we're going to come back on Monday with a review of the issues that have been raised tonight.
So, we're leaving the public hearing open?
Correct.
And postponing a decision on special use? Because I'm not sure-
If the notice, if the notices are proper, then the public hearing tonight was proper. If the notices were improper, then the public hearing tonight would not be properly notified.
Or was it the planning commission public hearing? That's what I'm understanding.
Well, if I sit through the chair, if you look at the notice for tonight's meeting, the notice to advertise the public hearing this evening was within the fifteen days, it says on the bottom of the notice, when it was published, exactly fifteen days, I believe if I counted correctly. So, the notice today was properly advertised. I think there's a discrepancy between the planning commission notices and the city council notices. I believe the city council notices were correct, it was the planning commission notices that Mr. Mullen is making reference to.
Well, if it's the planning commission, do we have to go back, and there are only rest of anybody, do we have to go back and perhaps make sure anyone's compliance there?
Again, in terms of the notice, the notice was actually, it was a longer notice than what the ordinance would have required. So, anybody that got the notice, they had more time than it wasn't that we only gave two days notice, and so there wasn't sufficient time.
But if it's beyond, it's supposed to be within a certain hearing, but you-
It's between, not less than five and not more than fifteen days, longer notice. So, if the ones for tonight were published on the eighth, tonight would be exactly the fifteenth day.
So, I mean, what I was trying to find out is what's happened with the planning commission, does that affect what we're going to do tonight?
But there was also a claim that there was deficiencies in the, in the notice itself for tonight.
And you're going for it tonight, and Ms. Banks is saying it was not.
Well, the publishing date is what she's addressing. I thought, what I heard is that there were errors in the notice itself in terms of the section of, of, of what section special use was being derived from, so-
All right, so we'll postpone until Monday.
But what, that, that-
Everyone's happy with that?
That was to say then that we would have to continue the public hearing on February twenty-fourth meeting. Even if we find that everything was done properly, it would then go to the February twenty-fourth meeting to continue the public hearing.
It's going to hurt the petition, and that's not his fault.
I understand, but we have, there are, I mean, we've got to go back and look at the issues.
Do it right or you don't. Can we go over again?
I know, I know.
That attorney, can we give him the special permission to do, to get spotted on his work?
Well, no, that would be a special use. That would be a special use, that's what they're asking for, special use.
Well, then why should he be punished for the mistakes of the planning department or somebody?
We're not sure who made this, what's that, he's anybody, we don't know.
Oh, it's plain and clear, isn't it?
No. Are we going to vote on this motion? Are the public hearing still open?
Do we need to have a motion to postpone a public hearing, add motion to postpone special use?
Well, the, in essence, you're postponing the requests that's before you. If, because the public hearing was open, it has not been closed, it would be continued at the next regular meeting, which we're assuming is February twenty-fourth.
Okay, we can do that.
You can do that, okay, you can do that. And by then, we will know, we will go through an analysis of when these were posted, and what was the content of each of the notices, to see if there was something improper in the notice.
I just have one suggestion that may help us work our way through this whole, and that is, Mr. Mullen was obviously reading from a prepared document. I'd like to get a copy of that, so we address each of his issues, so that we don't think we have at all, and then we have to go through it again.
I think that would be helpful.
Yes, I think just as, just as a guideline for what we're taking a look at. Secondly, when this is all over with, dust settles, I think we need to look at the wording in our ordinance, so that it's parallel to the state, or the state statute or-
We're looking at. Do you want us to ask Mr. Mullen something?
Yeah, that's-
Mr. Mullen, we do need a copy of what you, what you read to us tonight, if you can provide us with that sort of information in terms of what you said we had done or not done correctly, if you would.
Worth it, happy.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, to postpone to March eighth.
The motion was to postpone to the next regular meeting, is that, Councilman Lam, and Twitter, by Mr. Simon?
The next regular meeting? That's, that, we said one week, but we're then postponed to the next regular meeting.
Well, we were going to postpone and report back to you till the thirtieth, but the actual public hearing would be postponed until February twenty-fourth.
Right, so we're postponing to the twenty-fourth.
February twenty-fourth.
Motion is to postpone to the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-first, sorry. Why would it be February thirteenth? I mean, we have, we have the P A.
It's February thirteenth, the C O W?
It's a regular, it's a regular meeting.
The next meeting, I have to go through that. February thirteenth, then it's the meeting.
Yes.
All right. All right, we have a motion on the floor, postpone public hearing, continue public hearing February fifteenth. All in favor?
I-
Oppose? The motion has carried.
All right, to the legal department.
Is the public hearing still open?
No.
No, no, we postpone, it's postponed.
Away, don't go away, don't go away.
Postpone to the regular meeting.
Wait, wait. It's postponed till February fifteenth?
It's, I think, February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
I thought it was postponed till next, maybe the whole.
The next regular meeting is February thirteenth.
Well, and he is in trouble, or we can go with him.
This is a decision of the council.
And they are making a special compensation or some way that this gentleman can go forward while we deliberate?
Well, February, February thirteenth is only a few weeks now. February thirteenth is only a few weeks.
Well, what's it going to cost them a few days of the meeting?
No, nothing, I'm paying fifteen, two thousand dollars every month rent to the landlord, and she says nothing. I'm paying two thousand dollars every month, man.
And he somehow go ahead temporarily?
No, he's asking for a special use in the procedure established by the ordinance, and we need to comply with the ordinance, and that's what we want the opportunity to do, to make sure that the notices are done properly, so that there's no question that-
Close the middle, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do it anymore.
All right, somebody's right, February thirteenth, the next item? I don't know. I don't know.
So, aren't you glad you came with the decision? Been a long day.
That's a close. Are we going to have to postpone the next one?
I'm just looking at, there are the notice before the planning commission, there's the notice for tonight's meeting, and there are different references that match those notices, so.
They don't agree? Or are they, they don't agree?
They're not the same.
Maybe tell us, nobody here, or is somebody here?
I think the issue with the planning commission notice indicating together it was published on November twenty-seventh, or a meeting that was held on Wednesday, December fourteenth, so that then would be more than the fifteen days of the ordinance. So, I would think that with respect to this one, we're going to take the same, same action.
So, we're going to postpone that to the thirteenth?
And you want us to honor it, and again, if we need to, that will give us time to actually send the notices out, and either way, we-
Madam Chair, I have a motion ahead, our next agenda, we moved from the gentleman's place back on, I think he's going to shoot that we're in.
What we're just hoping is put it on to the-
What's going to come with it?
Motion to postpone G P twelve thirty-three, the numbers on the agenda, and postpone to February thirteenth. And I'm supporting the most, I'm to Cassie, all in favor?
Hi.
Madam Chairman, I wanted to get one other thing straight. If this gentleman, Mr. Mullen, wants to proceed a file, I'd like to make sure that those files will be reviewed by the legal department, and they can be viewed by the resident, and those files being available at a time certain, so that he may review them.
To the chair, Mr. Cassie. I apologize for not being prepared tonight, but Mr. Mullen has never approached me on this issue. And we do have a policy that when a resident wants to review the file, we follow the FOIA, and as the city attorney had indicated, there's a minimum of five days, we can- We can request an additional ten-day extension. Sometimes the files are off-site, and it takes time to get those files and to be able to review them. In this particular case, the citizen appears to have filled out an original FOIA request. His issue was resolved with the city clerk, and that FOIA request never came forward through our department. And that's why I'm totally unaware of the situation. I have to presume that we followed proper procedures with regard to our public hearing. Not to say that mistakes could have been made, but I would like an opportunity to sit down and review, review the files properly, confer with the city attorney, and have an opportunity to come back to you next week with a report. Of course, if there were errors made, we will follow proper procedures to have the applicants brought back at the proper time in an expediated manner. But I'm unprepared tonight, given this issue being brought to my attention only tonight, to be able to answer it with any authority. I'm presuming that we followed proper procedures. That's not to say that there may or may not have been some errors in the public notices itself, but I may or may not invalidate the procedure. I would like to review the state statute, which I believe we have followed, and maybe the next course of action is to update the ordinance. Maybe there's old language in the ordinance with regards to noticing requirements. The ordinance says, and the city attorney can correct me, that if there's an error in any one subsection of the ordinance, it doesn't supersede or make the ordinance invalid. So this might just be an old standard that was never updated. So I would like the opportunity to confer with the city attorney and my department to review the procedures. With regards to the review of the site plan applications, we're bound by the FOIA request. And to my knowledge, this gentleman has never talked to me or asked any questions. So we're following proper procedures to best our knowledge. And I would like an opportunity, again, after this meeting, to review our files and come back and give you a full report. I'll be the first one to admit if we've made a mistake and how to correct it.
Just to raise some more questions, Mr. Crumford.
Thank you.
If you don't have that opportunity, thank you.
Ms. Jordan, I do very have a concern if this gentleman did request a FOIA request in his office. Can the clerk, it didn't get there, you see what I'm saying? If the clerk decided a FOIA request wasn't needed, then it was just a question. I think we've got to leave it up to that individual requesting a FOIA request as opposed to a person influencing. That's what I'm concerned about, if there's any intention to not follow through on something that this gentleman has requested.
There was definitely not, I definitely did not influence anything. It was basically a simple yes/no answer with reference to what he was seeking. And all I did was make one telephone call. I didn't feel, he actually was at the counter very upset, saying, "I don't understand why I have to do this. I'd rather request this." I said, "Well, let me make a phone call for you." It was one phone call, his question wasn't answered versus a FOIA request, which is a five-day response time. You know, letters have to be sent. Everything was resolved with one simple phone call. And if I remember certainly correctly, it was with reference to a building question. I don't remember a theme, a planning. But he seemed very, he seemed...
Good writing. Good planning. Good writing.
I guess I have to say, I thought I...
He's asking for a FOIA request, give him what he asked for.
Oh, no, and really more than happy to. And I'd like to sit down with the city attorney also to make sure all the proper sections are being cited, because there are two section numbers between both parties. And then we can resolve this issue. And if Mr. Mullin wants to resubmit his FOIA request, we'll be more than happy to take that. What I would suggest is, because it's stuck to him that there is confusion in terms of whether a FOIA request was submitted. And once it is submitted, it then goes to the department, and there would have been a response. So I would ask that if there is still a desire by Mr. Mullin that he come tomorrow, present the FOIA request, then we would certainly be happy to process it. And he would have the opportunity to look at the records.
And I'd like to have staff be able to get them on the cell phone and then go through this with you and see what happens, because we can't resolve all this here.
Right.
People like I'm on my memory, and this retention in this kind of situation is impossible to resolve.
Right, right. We'd be happy to give the records, we just, if it never got to the department, they couldn't have produced what they're...
Madam Chair, I would just like to say that, you know, if someone comes to the counter and asks a question, I think I would expect a clerk to try to help that individual and make a phone call. If that would serve that person more rapidly than going to the FOIA, waiting five days, involve staff people, if it could be answered, you know. And what we're really hearing here is that you can't trust that being done. So if somebody comes up with another FOIA, it's just going to have to say, "I'm sorry, I'd like to make a phone call for you, but submit a FOIA." That's what it really comes, because, I mean, we have always, in this city, given service. And something individual who feels that they could cut red tape and get an answer from an individual, a resident, businessperson, or a visitor, I mean, they should be able to do that. And not be, you know, chastised or the allegation of this person. And it's just too bad, because, I mean, I think this is just a simple, what the clerk is saying, just a simple answer to a question, and we're just getting through to the issue.
But I think the advantage that we encounter, Dr. Simon, is that when people ask for information, they're informed. You've got to protect that.
No, I'm not, I'm not...
Definitely you've got to be accused of, you know, withhold information. So that's, if a person wants the FOIA given to them, even though...
No, I know what you're saying, I'm just saying is that, you know, that's public government, as far as I'm concerned. You know, there's so much red tape, and these FOIs are a mess. And maybe it's tied up staff, like you cannot believe. So, you know, I don't want to get to the point where somebody comes up with a simple answer, say, "Well, fill out FOIA," you know. But that's the thing, excuse me, Mr. Evans, but you know, that, I mean, that's what you couldn't get to. And you actually don't give the people the service if you could have, if you were operating, you know, in the way we used to, you know, so.
It took me five FOIs.
Yeah.
People went through many, you've got to protect themselves as well.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Simon, I agree with you.
Well, not to make this longer, but I was a FOIA coordinator for twenty years. Many times, somebody would fit in, would come with a simple question. I wasn't going to ask them, I was going to give them an answer, and get them an answer as quickly as possible. And if they wanted to go through all of the letters, and then you have to write a response and take the staff time, fine, but most people were just happy to have the answer without all that formality. Now, if something sensitive, for instance, you get FOIA personnel files, I would insist on that in writing. But it's all circumstantial, common sense is really what needs to take place here. But to need the answer, I think Ms. Banks did the right thing, she got the man an answer. And he didn't have to wait five days for it.
But now he's coming back saying, "I did the right thing," and what we give him.
I understand, but, you know...
But I think there's a misunderstanding, because I really think, when he was at the counter, and I misunderstood him, so I apologize. He thanked me over and over, and he's shaking his head yeah, so there's a misunderstanding. I did answer his question. He was very happy, and he said, "I wish I had come here earlier." So if there's a misunderstanding with this whole FOIA situation, he would came back the next day and said, "Thank you for your time."
But no, no, we've taken it about as far as we can, and it could go on all night, to a degree. I think everyone's tried to do the right thing here. There's some, something has happened, that maybe something's evolved through the cracks. We're going to resolve this, we're going to get this resolved, but this ends the discussion. We're not getting any further, we're just, there's different opinion, different people. Everybody's trying to help, I have no doubt of that. So that's, we've already made the decision on what we're going to do.
Through the chair, if I can ask to err on the side of the applicant to at least introduce this item, hold the public hearing, and either postpone to the next meeting, or if we find that something was done improperly, we would have to go through the process anyway. Could we at least open the public hearing, or...
No, we've already voted. We've already voted.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, we've already voted.
Got a little lost in the discussion here.
I understand. All right. Next, we're coming to, we have a site plan. We're coming to the communication portion. First person, the question, the mission is Pamela Gerald. Pamela Gerald, you know, routine, you've got five minutes, can you name and address?
Can you publicly state for the record when the five minutes starts?
The minute that you start to speak, when you give your...
After your name and address.
When you speak, when you give your...
But you've established two standards.
Well, the standard is, and I'll check this is legal, the standard is...
So would you check it was legal?
Ms. Gerald, the standard is, what I'm telling you is, at least that you, when you give your name and address, it starts right at that point, not after you give your name and address.
Okay. Mr. Gerard Mullin, I'd like to thank you so much for coming before council to have your eyes on Southfield. And it just goes to show, we need to work a little bit further to establish a standard. Pamela Gerald, P O Box one sixty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. And I would just like to say to the residents that there's been an attempt by the council president to change communications to the end of the agenda, so that you will get discouraged and leave and not wait this long to speak, and also to change it from five minutes to three minutes, and keep on coming forward. I just wanted to bring up the fact that during the time that myself and other residents were talking about the selection process of the police chief, we have not attacked anyone's character. We've only been concerned about the selection process and the educational or qualifications required for such a position. Ms. Stephanie English, who I highly respect, I think she's an excellent researcher, she passed out a little packet that had the official job posting, and I wanted to show it to you, the residents. And it basically said, under job requirements, that a bachelor's degree in a related field or equivalent is required, a master's preferred. Now, I just want to say that if a bachelor's is required, and that was the first part of it, master's preferred, I don't see where we're getting all of this equivalent experience. If you need a bachelor's and it was on there, you have to have it. If it says master's preferred, then you get some extra consideration if you have a master's. Now, I know that there are several candidates, and I just want to tell you some of the educational requirements for some of the candidates. One candidate has an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, a master's, edger's doctorate, and all of them have, like, the FBI academy and all the other police stuff that's required. Bachelor's in criminal justice, master's in public administration, bachelor's, graduate certificate, criminal justice, master's in business administration, bachelor's J D., bachelor's associate degree. Only one candidate does not have a bachelor's degree. So if you are going to say in the job posting, a bachelor's is required, how can a person without a bachelor's degree be considered a viable candidate? Not to disrespect any experience here, because I'm sure all of these police chief candidates have some type of experience that they can bring that would benefit the city as a whole and the residents, and for their style of policing. We're only looking at what the city of Southfield established in this document that you are calling the City of Southfield Job Opportunity Announcement, Extend Closing Date. And that's what you said, and I'll read it again. Bachelor's degree in a related field or equivalent, master's preferred. Now, I'm so glad that Mr. Gerard Mullin came up and talked about what the city does not do right. How many times have myself and other residents came before this council not to antagonize you, not to disrespect you, but to have our eyes on Southfield like you have asked us to, to say that maybe the manner in which we're doing something is not correct? What you do when we come before you, you humiliate, you disrespect, you dismiss, you don't pay attention. Some of you do. Mr. Cybert, you pretty much pay attention to everything. Mr. Lance, you pretty much pay attention to everything. And our newly elected youngest council person, I think you're going to set a real standard for this council, Mr. Jeremy Martin. But we have done that. We have attempted to do what you've asked residents to do, and you're just not right. So what you need to do from tonight forward, you need to establish a Southfield standard, write a mission statement that you're going to publish, like you do your strategic goals, and then tell the residents what the standard is. I think that's what should be done. And we still are interested in the selection process by which we are going to use to get a chief. I hope it's not going to be, because I've asked this question before and couldn't get it answered, not an attempt to combine police and fire, call it public safety, and pick one director. I hope we're not considering doing that, because I think gentlemen that was on council in the nineties attempted to do that, and it was stated that it couldn't be done, Southfield is too large of a city. So we don't want a public safety department with one public safety director. We want a fire department, we want a police department. We cannot afford to pay for cross-training, which is what would be required if you guys are thinking about doing that. And let's just stop with all the grandstanding, all the bickering. We're not doing things right. And the time that you take to belittle myself and other residents, you could be establishing a standard. Oh, gosh, I'm so used to saying, "Your time is up." And then, you know, just to some of the council people, stop being concerned about the time and listen to the substance, because sometimes when you guys are talking, some of the stuff that you're...
You think?
Oh, thank you. Oh, everything, exactly.
Um, next question, um, translation request is from Stephanie English.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie English. My address is two eight seven three five San Carlos, Southfield, four eight zero seven six. My email address is S D English at S B C Global dot net. And my phone number is listed under my full name in the white pages. I am here on behalf of almost an almost unilateral body of police officers and concern systems pertaining to the allegations of embezzlement, fraudulent time reporting, and misuse of city vendors to perform personal work against one of the police chiefs who is now in charge of special investigations for the department. I have been speaking out and acting on behalf of our police officers who have great concerns about these allegations not being properly investigated, and this chief remaining as a candidate for the permanent chief of police position. Please note that there is no lobbying by the police body organization for any particular chief candidate. There is just an aggressive push to have this particular chief eliminated as a candidate for the permanent chief of police position. I would like to also relay the fact that the officers, however, are also concerned with a breach of the oath that all of our police officers take, and that this police executive has allegedly executed any time embezzlement and has not been called on the card for discipline or punished for this alleged occurrence. The police body would be satisfied with the acting chief simply being eliminated as the permanent chief of police candidate, but they want the law upheld, and they would want a full investigation to be opened or reopened as required by law. I am one of these citizens that is also going to complain about the FOIA issue. I did request the report that supposedly was conducted by Chief Thomas. I received a FOIA letter that that is going to be denied, and that is very pertinent. and that is very pertinent to, um, the issues that I have been trying to, uh, push forward. The FOIA denial is too lengthy to go into, but it is actually, um, pertinent, you know, to the issues that I've been trying to, uh, push forward. Um, just continuing on, they want the law upheld and they want a full investigation to be opened or reopened as required by law and the proper investigation done. Because of no action by the city, um, administration has been done, I have delivered this issue to the FBI team located in Troy, Michigan. Please note that it's not just a potential crime that might have allegedly been done by this police executive, but it is the appearance of intentional or unintentional cover-up or no action being done to conduct a proper investigation by the city administration. Words don't count, proof and evidence do count, and we have it. Myself and any of the other police officers that want to come forward with hard evidence. Time embezzlement is a crime. Officers taking an oath to uphold any laws and using power or position to circumvent laws should not be tolerated in any, um, any instance. I look at you guys all in the face, and I have to say that these are strong allegations that I made, but I make them eyeball to eyeball with you as a leader body. I have made them directly in this kind of form to the person that these allegations are allegedly against. I stand confident that the information that we have, if anybody asks for it and we have not presented openly, is going to stand. I would not be putting my personal reputation on the line like this unless I felt that what the officers have is substantial and viable and credible. Um, the other thing that I find interesting is that with these hard statements that I'm making that, uh, there's nothing or a statement not coming back from this particular acting chief of police that he did not do what he's being accused of. He's the chief of police of the investigations department, so he knows the game of not stating what he didn't do if he really did it, because he might be committing, uh, perjury. So instead, it looks like he's hiding behind the wall of city administrators, leaders, and the city attorneys who are bent on protecting him and not giving due process to citizens like myself to be given a legitimate meeting opportunity to formally submit this as a presentation. I thank you very much. Oh, and also too, if I have a few seconds, this FOIA issue is as smoky as a fire. It is not transparent. You have to jump through hoops for what you claim is a transparent city. Okay, thank you.
Is Mr. Meltzer here? Is Richard Meltzer? Your time starts, and we start to begin, and we start to...
Richard Meltzer, 20850 Wakeham, Southfield. For the benefit of our viewing audience, I want to let our community know that the Michigan Public Service Commission, or the MPFC, announced that they will conduct a formal study of smart meters. For those unfamiliar with smart meters, they are the new computerized meters that our electric utility, DTE, recently installed on our homes and buildings as a replacement for the older mechanical meters we've used for years. The MPFC study is a result of resolutions passed by nine local governments, including Southfield, expressing concern with the new radio frequency, or RF, emitting computerized smart meters, concerns with issues of health and safety, personal data protection, and network security. Though announcement of the study is good news and represents progress, a number of concerns remain. These include: Item: The MPFC did not require DTE to stop deploying smart meters during the six-month study period, nor did they restrict the deployment of any of the other utilities. Item: There is no attempt to include independent experts in the study. This limits expertise since the MPFC has limited resources, and this constrains little to ensure objective analysis. Item: There is no effort to establish a current baseline of average RF exposure, which could easily be done with field studies. This is important because some medical and public health researchers state that long-term exposure to increased levels of RF can have adverse health effects. RF waves have become pervasive and include cell phones and towers, broadcast TV and radio, Wi-Fi, and microwave, and many other sources of commercial telecommunications. By example, cell phones were originally touted as completely safe, but no safety precautions are offered for heavy users. Let's remember that each of the utilities want to add an RF smart meter to our homes. Apartment and condo complexes will have clusters of dozens of these smart meters close to living quarters. Past studies and government standards have only measured these devices operating in isolation. We need to calibrate how much more RF will be added by new smart meters. Item: The MPFC has made no effort to determine how often and of what strength the smart meters broadcast, nor do they set manufacturer requirements to enable smart meters to make that data available to consumers. Item: There are no performance metrics established to determine the degree of success of the smart meter program. Research shows that majority of smart meter programs in other countries have not provided the business return on investment initially promised. Item: There is also an absence of performance metrics for the approved service DTE claims will result from smart meters. Item: MPFC did not create provisions for an open forum for public debate of the issues as we had requested. Item: And there is still no hint at the MPFC website informing the public that there is a large movement contesting the deployment of smart meters, no mention of nine municipal resolutions. This is a partial list of conspicuous omissions and only the tip of the iceberg regarding the many challenges to DTE's favorable assertions regarding smart meters. I haven't even begun to detail privacy and security issues here tonight. Interested parties are invited to respond to the MPFC with their comments by April 16th. They intend to issue their final report June 29th. See their website for more details. Look under E-Dockets and search for smart meters, or use the case number U17, followed by four zeros, or email me, richard underscore Meltzer at hottenhill.com. Hopefully, the MPFC intends to conduct objective and rigorous research and is not simply trying to appease the public's demand with a token effort. Maybe some of the omissions will receive attention in the final report. This is a work in progress. I will attempt to keep the council and city residents informed as significant developments occur. If it turns out that more forceful actions called for, we can consider that at a later date. I would like to refer anyone who wants to read more on this to go to the new website, michigans dot smartmeters dot com. And I was also alerted earlier this evening that Auburn Hills is currently formulating a very strong resolution that they want to take to, uh, to the MPFC. And that's it, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Uh, my name is Toby Rhodes, uh, L.A. 17001, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, 48075. Phone number is 2485697189. Uh, the reason why I'm here today is to talk about, uh, police harassment, police brutality on the part of the Southfield police with regard to, um, my living in my neighborhood. Um, since 2009, I've been constantly harassed by the Southfield police when walking in or around in my neighborhood. Um, I've been stopped just, uh, when I walk to the store, when I walk, uh, walk to the grocery store. And it seems as if, um, I've lived in Southfield since the late eighties, and I've never noticed any problems with the police until after 2008. And I've noticed a change in, uh, police interactions. Um, just generally in the neighborhood, I see a lot, lot, so I've started seeing a lot more police cars riding up and down the street. Um, I saw, when I go into the store, I see the police, and they look very hostile. For instance, I went to the gas station, saw like one, one cop reach for his gun just out in the candy bar. So, and that was before I started having all of these, uh, police interactions with, uh, brutality. So I, I did notice a change after 2008 with the kind of the Southfield police. Um, in 2009, they falsely accused me. Of course, there was no, uh, action by the, um, the Southfield, I mean, the city attorney of Southfield promptly rubber-stamped it, didn't look into the matter, didn't look into if there was any evidence. Fortunately, there was one Southfield prosecutor who saw that there was no evidence, and so that was resolved. But the fact remained that the Southfield police charged me without cause. They used the law as a weapon to get someone who lives in the residence, has never been accused by anyone, didn't, hasn't never hurt anyone, or hurt anyone's property in the community, and has, uh, uh, been living in the community peacefully and orderly. And yet, the Southfield police chose to, uh, target me and to attack me in my own neighborhood just for walking down the street peacefully. Then in 2010, um, I decided to pick a Bank of America. Bank of America has been nothing but a plague on this country and a plague on the city of Southfield. I know they have the air of respectability that they're a bank and that they're supposed to be established, but they're not a Michigan bank. They don't care about the people of Southfield, and they don't care about the people of Michigan. All they care about is just protecting their paychecks and their jobs. And I decided to pay, uh, uh, pick a Bank of America, because I understand that they throw my neighbors out on the street, they deny us credit, they deny us loans, and yet they think they have the permission to come in our community without our permission to continue this kind of activity. So I peacefully protested Bank of America, the Southfield police, instead of protecting the interests of the community, the community that's going to be here, even after Bank of America's gone, they chose to attack me. And the Southfield city attorney, once again, in the cowardly way that they usually do, rubber-stamped what the Southfield police wanted, even though there was no evidence of anything that I had done wrong. And I had not hurt anyone, and I had just exercised my civil rights, Martin Luther King fought for, um, and other civil rights, the American Constitution fought for. Instead of protecting my rights, city attorneys just rubber-stamped, which explains the, the behavior of the Southfield police. They know that there's never going to be any challenge to their conduct by the city attorney. They're just going to rubber-stamp whatever they do. I had to go through almost, uh, a year and a half of trial, and of course, I was found not guilty because there was no evidence, but the harm was done, irreparable harm was done. I had, my life was put on hold just because the Southfield police wanted lies. They used the law not to protect the community, they used the law to protect Bank of America. Bank of America's interest is almost as big as the Bank of America's police, even though Bank of America is not the one who has been supporting them all these years. It's community residents, people who live here, the homeless, the taxpayers. But the Southfield police didn't get the credit that they gave, no consideration to that. Instead, they immediately decided with Bank of America, even though Bank of America is not from Southfield. And so, and so, that was in 2010. I had to go through a, um, proceeding that ended middle of 2011. Then I decided, once again, to take a Bank of America. And they, and the Southfield police once again attacked me without cause, without reason, without hurting anybody, just because I wanted peacefully protest and warn my neighbors about the harm and the threat that Bank of America is. And once again, I had to go through a prosecution by the city attorney. It was two cowardly, to, to check the actions of Southfield police. Then you go to these cowardly judges, not all of them, two of them. One of them actually came through big time. But those cowardly judges, instead of standing up to the Southfield police, they rubber-stamped it too. And it was all lies, and once again, I was found not guilty. And these are the kind of harassment I had to go through, just to inform my community. I didn't do anything to anybody. I'm just trying to tell them about the threat that Bank of America is. But instead of protecting the interests of the community, the Southfield police attacked the community. In other words, the Southfield police are not here to protect us. They are law enforcement, they are here to attack us. They have their special interests that they protect, that protect their paychecks and their budgets and their, uh, particular interests, but they don't particularly care about whether or not the whole nation's...
Mr. Rhodes, your time is up.
Uh, thank you.
Next, we have a couple of council items. An expense report, a downtown county party, Detroit County Council.
Madam President.
What?
I'm going to accept the expense report of the council for category for the Detroit County Club on December 15th.
Word.
Motion, Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Frasier, Alun Fair.
Aye.
The directors of the committee, I would say.
Yes. Any questions? Uh, and last, council?
Yes, I have, uh, two items that I'd like to bring forth. One, council, I would like to refer to a conference study at a later date exploring all elected officials, um, having vacated offices that they didn't elect to choose, should they choose to seek another office. And I'd like to refer to a conference study. Have some discussion on that. Uh, the other item I want to bring up is I've heard, uh, statements made by members of the public, and the word "embezzlement," "false report," known, and have known individuals looking at cameras who, uh, the residents of the city and the viewing audience at the city of Southfield is involved in a cover-up, and as I stated in our prior committee of the whole meeting, there is no cover-up here in the city of Southfield as it relates to the selection of a police chief. The city administrator has not brought forward any candidate that this body, uh, will be selecting, or has been presented, the city administrator has not presented any candidate for us to decide who will be the next chief. And so, I want the audience to know, the public to know that there has not been any individual vote for, there is not any cover-up that the city operates, in my opinion, to the highest level of integrity. And if in fact, we may have done something wrong, and we see that could be a possibility with the, um, with the two items that were brought forward under the, um, public hearings, we will make the correction. But there is not any cover-up. And I think there was a recent article in the Southwestern Sun as it relates to the selection of a police chief, and when our city administrator rates that person forward, we move forward with that. Thank you.
No? None? I'm there?
Thank you, uh, to have us here. Just a couple of items. Uh, we again had our daddy's daughter, Dan, on the city of Southfield. And if you ever want to look at the leadership of the men, uh, and this community staff, this event is just amazing. It is a sold-out event every year, and it's just something to see the little girls come out of the dad. It says a lot about the Southfield community and how, uh, the men and the fathers of the community, um, take their roles proudly, and that's nice. Uh, I think the dads smile as much as the little girls going in, or the uncles or the grandfathers who escort their daughters. So, Southfield has continued to have this event, and it's continued to be a filled-out event, and some little girls are here playing for months to make sure that they are, they are prepared, that they are prepared for the night. Also want to, um, to comment on the Martin Luther King Day Walk. It was a fabulous, fabulous turnout. The young people, uh, who were there, um, the program, our, our display of all the different talents of young people in the community, and, and we all ask, "Why do we continue to have a Martin Luther King march?" And it's because we'll, so we'll never forget. And one of those things that I use, um, today, who were warned in the United States of all the freedoms that they have, uh, sometimes the things take for granted, that, and the, the reason why Southfield is with this diverse community, uh, continue to have this market, marching to be, um, really a leader in its reasons, um, on celebrating the rights of all people and how we live together in harmony. So it was, it was just, it's always like turning and looking at the back, looking at the sea of people walking, and in the spirit of reinforcing the dream of all of us being equal, and the dream of us fighting for our rights and living together. So, again, I'm proud to, to say that Southfield, um, had this event, and it was just a tremendous community turnout. The other thing I want the community to know, that there was a, a new chamber of commerce that was started in the city of Southfield. We now have a Southfield branch of the Black Chamber of Commerce that's in the city of Southfield. They, um, I was there for their, uh, launch meeting. And, um, as you know, we have many ethnic groups that form different chambers. We have in the city of Southfield the Channing Chambers. Uh, I'm very active and involved with the Lebanese and, um, Arab chambers, um, that are part of our community. So we have added the, um, the Black Chamber, and I'm very proud of that group, and they are, um, really looking forward to working with the city and continue to grow our commerce and our economy. I do have one question to, um, the city administrator and his public workers. On the night that we have the... On the night that we have the one storm of the year, is my understanding that we literally had to close the lodge because of the accidents and waiting for the roads to be salted? Can you give me any explanation of why we have such a treacherous situation on the lodge and why we had to wait so long for it to be salted?
For the chair, in terms of the responsibilities there, Mr. Boski.
The lodge's responsible, the state and Oakland County Road Commission does the maintenance for that. We did go down on Saturday morning and spread saltworm because they had not been able to get to it. We also had some refrigerating. Temperatures dropped so quick that we did have a lot of refrigerating. Even our roads have been clear, we've had re-freezing certain areas.
That's cool, then. Have we ever been down South Florida before?
Yes.
I mean, there wasn't that much snow, so I-
It was just that it turned so cold. Once you played it, once we removed the first layer of snow, it was so cold that the traffic that was out there froze that road very quick.
So, two hours wait for it to be salted?
We got the call early in the morning on Saturday. That's the first call we got from dispatch. It was about seven o'clock in the morning.
So, have we communicated with the state?
We've already talked to the county locally at the border, Southwood, or, sorry. They were in the middle of a shift change. They should know the county only works 16 hours. Then their people have to go home, it's mandatory at that time. They had a very skeleton crew out there at that, at that point.
Well, I, we need to have some dialogue because I understand that everyone's cutting back, and that includes us. But to say that our roads are major, expressly going through our city, have to shut down for two hours to be salted. And I understand there were some conditions, and my goodness, it was the first snow of the year. And this just does not sound like this was brought to the camera. I'm not satisfied because I know that.
We will make contact with the persons responsible, the departments responsible. And the fact that it's been brought up before our public is, is good. And we will, we will state the case because we, we got our job done to an excellent standard. And, and I'm glad we did what we did to alleviate the situation. But frankly, I, I don't know any crew that has percentages reductions that we've had. And we don't use excuses here, but we get the job done, we find a way to do it, and that's unacceptable. I totally agree with you, Madam Mayor.
And Jim Charet, our city administrator, to our public work. You know, we have excellent public work here in our city. But there needs to be, if everyone's cutting back, we have to make sure we're all on the same page because it's our, it's our residents, it's our roads in, in, in Southfield that we should have a clear- and this is like after the back shifts are changing or whatever. There should be a clear level of understanding and expectation on all of the counties, states, and cities. And so, as we move forward, thank goodness we haven't had a lot of, this was our first, this was the snow, and it did not turn out well.
We made a storm.
Mr. Charet?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Attorney?
Chair, as council will recall, on January 9th this year, there was a discussion with council relative to an adoption of an ordinance that would allow the city to seek reimbursement for medical services that were performed during the period that incurred that he did the custody of the city of Southfield. Council discussed the matter, there was consensus raised that council was in agreement with that type of an ordinance. And so, this evening, you will see a proposed ordinance that would accomplish that. In essence, it would allow the city to seek reimbursement for medical services and medical transport that will provide to people during the point of the period that that person is in the custody of the city. And that ordinance would accomplish that.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Uh, Chair, uh, Chair, the-
This ordinance, the, what is the number?
Fifteen eighty-nine.
Fifteen eighty-
First, we have to pass it.
Generally, there would be an approval of the ordinance, and then you would enter-
Approval of the ordinance has been submitted to the council.
Court.
Motion, Mr. Frasch, supported by Mr. Fraser, Alonfer.
I want to ask a question. To the attorney. If there is, we're talking about people that, that have been our wards of the city or under the control of the city by reason of arrest or what. Supposing someone, and I'm going to make this up, someone was trying to escape our police, and our police do a, a wonderful job of tracking down folks that are trying to get away. And they crashed their car, and the person gets her, and they're taken to the hospital. And that person doesn't have insurance. Is it the city's responsibility to pay the hospital bill, or is it?
It, it is ultimately that person's responsibility to pay his or her own medical care. It is that person's. Now, what's happened in the past is, and I think this has kind of been done both ways, but if we take a person to the hospital, at some past time, there have been some bills that have been sent to the city because that person ended up not having insurance, and the, the thought was, well, the city, you presented them to us. And we worked with those, and we negotiated those, and we came out. At this point, prominent hospitals where most of these people are taken are not charging the city. They are either, they are either charging the person, or seeking insurance for that person, or they're doing whatever they're doing. So, we have not been receiving bills for those people at the time, at the current time.
Okay, I just want to make sure that-
But this, in particular, this would be so for medical transport. So, if our, if our EMS goes out and provides service, not only during transport, but provides service, then that would now be, because there is a cost to the city to provide that, that we would then be able to seek that against that person.
In that conversation that we had when we were discussing this, was also brought up about the runs that aren't medically, our medical runs that still cost us money where someone falls on a bed and we go out and pick them up, put them back in bed, and they're not hurt, so they don't have to go to the hospital. I know it's not included in here, but that's not included in here, but we need to take a look at that too.
And, and we have. I mean, I think there is a, there is a point at which, when those kind of calls from the same originator have occurred, that there has been discussions with, with that person, that, you know, really, this is a medical provider, this is not just assistance, and so we try to work with the residents on those kinds of issues.
Okay, good, okay, thank you. I'm ready to vote.
Alonfer?
Aye.
Hello? Mr. Frasch. Now, I need a-
Then, what was the order, sir?
Fifteen eighty-nine.
Fifteen eighty-nine. I will get, we introduce ordinance number fifteen eighty-nine, this one.
Motion, Mr. Frasch, supported by Mr. Fraser, Alonfer.
Aye.
Follows motion, Mr. Frasch. Number fifteen eighty-nine, please introduce. Now, your question?
Thank you. And also pursuant to the open meeting, we had councilmen about to schedule a council meeting for the 2012 calendar year. The proposed schedule for you was presented at the three of the whole meeting on January 9th. Council made some adjustments to the schedule that was presented, and it is recommended that you adopt the schedule in your cabinet meeting.
And so, the- Court.
Motion, Mr. Frasch, supported by Mr. Fraser, Alonfer. I want to just think all of these revisions that were, that corrected the-
Aye.
Alonfer?
Aye.
Follows motion, Madam Chair. Mr. Crowe, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm requesting with the city attorney to extend the moratorium on wind turbines for an additional 90 days. At your council meeting on October 24, 2011, the Senate Body granted 120-day extension of the moratorium on wind turbines to February 1st, 2012, to allow for further study and to give the planning commission ample time to hold study meetings and conduct a public hearing prior to making a recommendation to the city council. Since, since October 24th, staff has done considerable study on this issue, has completed a draft of the proposed sustainable energy ordinance, has met with the city attorney's office, has conducted several meetings with the planning commission, and is currently being reviewed by Oakland County for additional input. We believe that we plan to schedule this item for public hearing with the planning commission in February and bring it back to the council in March. Therefore, that is beyond the current moratorium, and we are requesting an additional 90 days to April 30th, 2012, to give the planning commission additional time to hold the study sessions, the required public hearings, and give us the time to have this as a work's items with the council before your ultimate public hearing and adoption. We've expanded the scope of the wind turbines to also include solar, and we're looking at other sustainable energy items. So, the wind turbine would be part and parcel to an overall sustainable energy ordinance.
Uh-huh, court.
Motion, Mr. Frasch, supported by Mr. Frasch, Alonfer.
Aye.
Follows motion, Madam Chair. Do you have a question? Do you have a question to schedule and no ordinance? Do you know, President, Mr. Frasch?
I had one, when, we better brought up the fact that we had been down in the lodge and spread salt. And since the lodge is down our, our road, and we've extended some of our, our supplies, is the state going to give us a truckload of salt to, I mean, we have to pay 50 bucks a ton or whatever it is. I think if we're helping them out, they ought to at least replace our, our salt supply.
To the chair, I'm sure we can work that out with the road committees from Oakland County. They're the ones that are in charge of the maintenance down there, so I'm sure we can get that back.
Okay, I, you know, we passed a contract that I, it was a dollar and fifty cents difference. So, if we're watching dollars, we need to watch dollars all the way around.
I understand, thank you.